Call the meeting of the Willits City Council of October 13th to order at 6:31. And we will have Kathy Zitas in the pledge of flag and roll call.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Present.
Connie.
Here.
Stransky. Councilmember Stransky. Rodriguez.
Present.
Mayor Strong.
Here. Is it might be worth giving a quick call to see if Larry lost track of time? And he'll join us in a minute. All right. So we are now going to public communications, and we welcome comments from the public on any matter that is not on the posted agenda at this time, and up to three minutes. So and public criticism is accepted.
Are you gonna call in?
And so anybody in the public who would like to address the city council at this time.
You gave it to him, would you give it to him again?
And not hearing anybody step to the plate. So we will move on. There are no special public matters this evening either. That's sort of sometimes when we get presentations or items that are of special public interest, we put those early on the agenda. So not tonight. We do not have any ordinances to enact tonight. We don't even have a consent calendar tonight. We have a streamlined agenda. The monthly activity reports will there was business license activity attached to our agenda, to our packet. Commissions, agencies, and authorities, we are oh, and Kathy, yes.
I just got in touch with Larry. He'll be calling in in just a moment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. The commissions would be things like if we met as the planning commission or the successor to the redevelopment agency, and we are not doing that this evening. So now we're going to item eight, which is the city manager report and recommendations. So Brian.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. First item is 8A on the agenda, and it is a agenda summary and a resolution that Kathy put together. And this is basically, we missed a little bit of a deadline from previous month. This is a resolution that enables the council to keep or convene virtually, has been the practice for the last, you know, year, year and a half now. The governors or the governor has changed some of the protocols and orders related to how elected bodies convene. And so what we're asking or what is in the content of this resolution basically says that you are acknowledging the governor's orders and that you have under full guidelines have decided to continue meeting or convening virtually due to the COVID and to prevent the spread of the COVID situation within our community. And as such, this would have to go back before the council each month. It's basically a one month, one month of enactment of the resolution. And our understanding here at staff level is that the council has agreed to run out essentially the year of meetings. So we have, we're gonna have another council meeting on the 27th. Virtually, we have the budget workshop, which is gonna be the 25th, which is gonna be in person. One meeting in November. Typically, you have one meeting and then one meeting in December. So, you know, we're looking at not a whole lot of bulk of meetings to consider. And then we'll look at our situation in January.
Okay. Any questions regarding this?
Hi, ma'am, this is Larry.
I guess it's a resolution?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. But the public, the, yes. Who was that? Did I hear someone wanting to comment on this? I guess not.
No, this is just Larry. I'm in the.
So. Okay, thanks, Larry. So we are, by the way, Larry, we are on item 8A, and there has not been any input from the public or questions. And Brian explained that we have to do this on a month-to-month basis to continue to allow us to meet telephonically instead of in person due to the COVID and under the new guidelines from the state. So anyone like to move approval of that?
Yes, sir. Really hear you call it out to the public. Seems like your sound wasn't.
My sound wasn't working?
Your sound wasn't synced. It's like at one point here, I was hearing that you weren't moving. So I don't know if you want to do one final call to the public.
Okay. So. Okay, it's hard to, I mean, from, I can't tell that that's happening. So please do let me know if it's cutting out and if needed, Sabrina could take over. Okay, so we're calling for anyone else who would like to comment about item 8A, which is enabling the city council to continue meeting telephonically during the pandemic guidelines from the state. And I'm not hearing any comments. No. Would any council members like to move approval?
I would like to move.
Move, recommend it action. Thank you, Jerry. Seconded, anybody?
A seconded. And then I really would like to see us get back to in person at all possible in January. I do understand that we need to pass this every 30.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. And by the way, I had made a comment just a little earlier that I think it's important that the record of our meetings be available, at least on request, but if not, ideally posted on our website so that if people aren't able to attend, obviously in person, but even telephonically, that they can access them. Okay, so we need a roll call vote. Kathy, please.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Connie.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mayor Strong.
Yes.
Thank you.
In case it was cutting out, and also at least one new caller has arrived, we did already go to the public comment section, which is really at the very beginning of our meetings. But if somebody just arrived and wasn't here for that and wishes to make a comment that is not on an engendized item, I'll give you one more chance. Anybody? Okay. Hearing none. We're moving to item 8B, which is a confirmation of Fabian Luzaraga as chief of police.
So, yes, Mayor, Council, members of the public, it is my honor to have announced or inform the council and the public that we have or I have sworn in Mr. Luzaraga as the police chief, chief of police for the city of Willets. There was a little bit of delay from the time that we did the interview and from the recruitment process to the time we have placed him in that office. He had received some medical clearances. He is healthy, A1 shape, ready to go. He's out there on patrol. As you can see, he's in uniform. You know, I am, I'm looking forward to working and extending the relationship that I already have started with Chief Luzaraga. I think, you know, I think the public and the council knows right now that the police department is under a little bit of scrutiny. We are going also through some staffing changes as well with losing members due to unknown reasons, really just people moving and, you know, having lives intervene into their daily professional situation. So as outlined in that memo, Chief Luzaraga and I have a plan. We, you know, we had several plans, but, you know, we're trying to put together a valid plan that creates a solid, equitable police department for this community. We know we have this rather large task before us, and but we're both ready to do that. And I think we have this, I know we have the support of the council to do that as well. There's gonna be some tough decisions and some, you know, actions that's gonna have to be taken to kind of look at what we need to do. But I think Chief Luzaraga has that experience and expertise to help guide the council through this process and myself as well. So in closing, as noted in that memo, we're looking at, you know, really putting together a solid plan, operations plan for the police department that is tied to staffing and what we can legitimately accommodate where our budget and resources for the department and really get that component of the police department out in the public. Chief and I, we both acknowledge that we both need to be out there in the public, and we're gonna be working on that as well. So. So in closing, I just want to, once again, extend my welcome and gratitudes for Chief Luzaraga to take this assignment, and we have great things ahead of us, and we're looking forward to the challenge and the opportunities.
Yes, welcome, Chief Luzaraga. And would you like to say a few words? Awesome.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the welcome. And as Brian has mentioned, you know, we've got some challenges ahead. One of the things that pushed me into pursuing this decision was, you know, the wanting to take on challenges and not just sit back and, you know, enjoy things. And it comes with, you know, I think with any police department, there's going to be ebbs and flows and, you know, regarding staffing, regarding issues, regarding, you know, whatever is going on out there, because we are in such a dynamic profession that, you know, we have to be able to handle and control things. So we've got some challenges ahead, but we're all committed to taking them on and showing the best possible resolution. I just want to say that on behalf of, you know, our department and the members of our department, we all recognize that we are committed to our mission, fighting pressure on police services, keeping our community safe, and treating everyone with respect and dignity that we have been, you know, refrained from day one that I've been here. We do have some decisions to make going forward that will be made, taken into account what's best for the community and what's best for the members of this organization. You know, there's, as Brian mentioned, there's, we have come under some scrutiny again. And my pledge to you and to the community is that we will meet any credible and corroborated issues. We'll meet them, we'll address them, no matter who it affects, you know, the organization. So we will continue to do that. We'll continue to provide service to the Willets community as safety of its residents and visitors here is basically our paramount priority and responsibility. So I'm happy to be here. I'm happy to be able to get out and about. Already been in a position to be able to come out of the coal shifts a couple times, and that will continue into the future. Our recruitment is ongoing for some of the existing and anticipated vacancies that we have coming up. So we continue to do that and we start to try and get the best possible available vacancies that we will honor and create. Thank you for the welcome again, and I'm happy to be here.
Thank you. I think that will do our traditional thing, which is any questions from the council members first, and then we'll open it up to any public comment. So any questions or clarifications from council members? Jerry?
Again, I wanted to formally welcome Chief Luzaraga on board, and hopefully he'll get a Giants shirt on the back there.
I may have to do that after tomorrow. Please.
Okay. Any other council member wanna jump in? We'll have another chance. Anybody from the public want to address us on this item? If you do, you have to speak up. Apparently there aren't any comments from the public. So one less chance if any council members wanna ask a question or make a comment.
Thanks. I just, again, I appreciate your willingness to work in our community and with our citizens to better our community. I appreciate your willingness to be transparent and upfront, and now that we can count on you for that. Yeah, thank you.
I agree with that. Yeah, very important that we have good lines of communication and, you know, aren't sweeping things under the rug. We're, you know, gonna confront, if there's problems, we confront them, and we resolve them to the best of our ability for the benefit of the community. That's what we're here for. Okay, well, welcome once again. And we have item 8C, moving to that. City email and IT support services. That would be Brian, has that your presentation?
Yeah, I just, once again, I've been briefing the council on this ongoing or recent development. It kind of came somewhat out of the blue. Apparently, the council of the county was looking to make a change with their IT program internally. And as part of that change, they are decided not to continue with a group-wise platform, which is currently extended to us for our email services. And it's, that's okay. Basically, the county is gonna continue holding that license, maintaining that license to June 30th of 2022. But we would like to transition out of that sooner. It's just because the county's gonna have some difficulties. They're gonna be transitioning to a totally different Microsoft platform starting in the new year, and they're gonna have some, they'll be able to provide some coverage and support for us, but that's not gonna be their priority. And if we have issues, we don't want to be caught behind. So I just want to make that clear. It's gonna be in time. We're gonna be looking at making that transfer with the email platform. There's gonna be some expenses involved and some coordination of, you know, cataloging and inventory emails and migrating them to a new platform, and the council will be above 2022 have emails. So, you know, as I put down in the memo here, chatting and conversing with Andy Heath, the finance director, you know, we're looking at additional of approximately $3,000 to $4,000 to $5,000 a month, depending on what services we'll be able to retain as Willets vendor. And that wasn't programmed into our post-budget, so that that's gonna be, you know, be advantaged as well. The county has been great to work with in this transition. They've been opening up communication. I've been working with their staff. You know, this, we had a great relationship with them. It was very cost-effective on our part, and they decided to go in a different direction to accommodate their internal needs, as I said. So we're gonna be looking at that. I reached out to the fire district, because they're part of the group-wide system as well, to see if they would like to team up with the city as we venture out to securing a new vendor for this, if they want no economy scale. So there is that opportunity as well. And one of the big things, just moving through this, the first step that needs to be done is the police department has a different email extension, and that needs to be taken care of. Basically, the county needs to separate that out and kind of put in a whole patent for their emails. So we're coordinating with that. So are there any questions on the council? I mean, kind of, yes, Jerry?
So are we merely, are they merely dumping the email, or are we also not gonna be using them for IT support also?
Both. They are, they're not gonna sustain group, sustain group-wise, so that's one thing. And then the IT services, they will have it in place until June 30th of 22. But the understanding is, is that, you know, when we're ready to transition out of their support system, they would appreciate that because that frees up. Because, you know, internally, we have about 60 odd email, 60 or 70 email accounts that, you know, they would have to worry about. They have, you know, over 1,000. And so, you know, they have a bigger mountain they have to climb. So they.
They just also provide support if one of the computers went down in the city. That's also.
Yes. So basically, that monthly contractual service that we have with the county is gonna be sunset at the end of the fiscal year. You know, they will still maintain and help us out, like I said, in the current period and until the June of 22. But if we can move along, they would appreciate that, because that would make things easier on their end.
Any other questions or comments from council members? Okay. Any comments from the public?
Siding stuff, we get with this every day.
Yeah. We're gonna make up for this short agenda, because next couple of meetings, we're gonna have some fairly important items that will be more lengthy.
You know, and just, I've done this transfer of email platforms before, and it is complicated. And our world revolves around our digital communication system. So yes, it's something serious, but I just want to give the heads up to the council and the public, you know, why there's gonna be additional costs and why. I just want to make it clear, the county's not dropping us for any personal reasons, and we're not trying to break away from the county. It's just a business decision on their end, and that's understandable.
Okay. All right. We're now at 8D. Any other verbal reports from our city manager?
Not too many. Like I said, I've been out of the office a little bit, attending the county's annual conference with Jerry, a lot of group sessions there. And then last week ago is the ICMA national conference. So I'll be back for the rest of the month. So yeah, like I said, we'll be looking at some additional agenda items in the upcoming months sessions, I guess.
Yeah. Okay. All right. We have item 9A, which is approval of a temporary hiring for fill-in dispatchers from Menino County Sheriff's Office due to our own staffing shortage in that department. And Police Chief Luzaraga will present.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Basically, what this is, is a kind of an extension of prior agreement that we had with them. That prior agreement had a maximum cap on it of $6,000. Because of the vacancies that kind of sprung on us in our dispatch centers, we anticipate that we will be needing a little bit more help and assistance from the sheriffs, like dispatching corps. So they are raising the maximum from prior 6,000 to 25,000. So this comes before you for approval because of the amount. We will be as frugal as we can be as far as their use, but we do have to plug them in to our department every now and then just to give our remaining dispatchers a break in the day off every now and then. We are having some other measures put into place. A couple of our patrol officers have been trained up in rudimentary and basic dispatching procedures, and they've already started to fill in a little bit. So we're kind of moving things around until we get a permanent dispatcher back into, back to the place. In that arena, we do have a candidate that's in the midst of our backgrounds right now. She's cleared the basic background, and we're waiting for medical based to come through. So hopefully, we'll have some good news in that arena in the next two or three weeks. So get some help in there, get her trained up as quickly as possible, and, you know, be able to provide us with the help we need there. But the agreement here is basically just kind of raising the cap from, for sheriff's services from 6,000 to 25,000.
Just one comment from me is that in addition to wanting to easily husband our resources as far as how much money this costs us, that it's very important to, you know, to relieve our dispatchers and not have them, you know, just burning out completely. But the other factor is that having our dispatchers be local, you know, be here in Willets is important. I think we get much better service because they know the territory. And dispatchers out of Yucaya might not know, you know, where someone is calling from or what it means. So anyways, it's just as much as we can to fill in with our local and our staffing locally. That's great. I certainly don't object. Yeah.
I agree completely. It's much better when, you know, because you have people sometimes calling in 911, and they're giving you, you know, landmarks, they're giving you colors of houses and a set of averages to come with.
Yeah.
Or business. And so it's good to have somebody who knows the local geography and is able to zero in on where exactly.
Any other questions, clarifications from council members or Chief Luzaraga? Any comments from the public on this item 9A? Not hearing anybody, so we're gonna bring it back up to the council. And if anyone would like to make a motion with a staff recommendation, it's available. Jerry usually does. I can't hear you.
I would like to move staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Moved by councilmember Gonzalez. And Sabrina?
Seconded.
Seconded, okay. Motion and second, and we will have a roll call vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Connie.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mayor Strong.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. We do not have. Thank you, Chief Luzaraga. We don't have departmental reports this meeting. It's gonna be next time toward the end of the month. And we're on item 11, city council announcements, communications, and reports. I believe this includes, you know, agencies or boards that you represent us on, as well as any items you want to bring to our attention. So we'll just go through, Jerry, do you have anything?
Just kind of a recap of the League of Cities. There was a lot of breakout sessions. I did the ethics training while I was there, but I kind of wanted to check out things related to first. Brian took some other things. I went away with some ideas that I'd like to.
That was ideas relating to what?
The PERS retirement.
Oh, yes.
Ways we can, our retirement as a city. So, and that was basically it. I did leave final day a little early just because I had to be in San Antonio. Then I did attend League of Cities home event. I don't have my notes, but they installed local Redwood Region officers. And I put in to be on the Public Safety Committee again, so I'm waiting to see whether I can get that.
Okay, thank you. Greta, do you have any reports?
MCOG met last Monday, and the one item that I really wanted to share with the council is that the board unanimously agreed to deprogram funding for MTA that was originally scheduled for their transportation hub in Ukiah. They've apparently put those plans on hold for the time being. And the money was reprogrammed for the purchase of electric buses, one of which will be used in Willets area. So this was very good news, and I'm sure Suprina will have more to say from the MTA board, but that was a good thing to be a part of at MCOG. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Are you also, well, I won't say that. Larry Stransky, do you have a report?
I have no reports, but we have wastewater and water next weekend on the 19th at 10:00.
Okay. And Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Greta, I'm super excited as well because Willets is going to have the honor of being the first city in the state of California to have a fully electric cutaway bus.
Nice.
For public transit. And we're excited. We'll be working with the city to coordinate a ribbon-cutting ceremony and all the hoopla that, all that excitement. So you'll be hearing more about that. There was a goal to turn all of our fleet to electric, and we're working hard on it after a year. And this is one more purchase that we've been able to make to get towards that goal that we have. I believe we currently have three or four electric buses in the works of different sizes. And they're all at different stages, but Willets, the cutaway bus in Willets, which is generally known as Bus Number One, that will be the first gets replaced in the fleet. So yeah, that's exciting.
What does cutaway mean?
It's one of the smaller buses. So if you've seen that, in fact, my logo happens to be on the cutaway bus in Willets. If you've ever seen the Toy Depot on the side of that smaller MTA bus, it's like the half the size of the long ones. It does around town in Willets. So Willets One, which is the one that goes to Ukiah, and then Bus One is the one that goes around town. And so, yeah, so that's exciting. We had the idea of location prior out, a fully electric bus, as well as the city of Willets has been easy for MTA to work with in getting our charging station, working with PG&E and such to get that all set up. It isn't just the bus, but it's how are we going to charge it when the bus is stationed overnight and making sure that that system is in.
How soon is that likely to be operational?
That's a good question. I'm, we're hoping by the end of the year, maybe January. I know Fort Bragg was hoping that they would beat us to it, but they're having a little bit of technical difficulty with their charging stations. So Willets is going to be the first.
Okay.
Yeah. The other thing is, as Brian had mentioned previously, that we'll have the Arts Meet Friday, the 22nd at 10:00 a.m. at City Hall with our focus specifically on potential project that would be located on the Highway 20. Just discussing the specifics of that potential project before it comes before council.
Who is the rep to the museum? Is that Greta or Suprina? Greta?
That's me. The last meeting did not have a quorum, and the next meeting is not scheduled until November.
Okay. I did want people to know about the current museum exhibit, the Judy Berry and Redwood Summer Exhibit. It's a very powerful exhibit, and they've been having a whole bunch of special events with people talking about the lawsuit having to do with the FBI and music that came out of that movement. And anyway, it's been, I think it goes until October 27th, if I'm not mistaken. People should take advantage of our local museum.
Yeah, I mentioned that at the last council meeting when I gave my report from the museum board.
Oh, thank you. I had forgotten that. But I've gone to some of the events, and I was very excited about that, so, okay. We are, oh, and I have two boards to report on. The Economic Development and Financing Corporation is meeting tomorrow at 2:00 in the afternoon, telephonically. And there's a couple of new loans that are being asked to be approved. So they are really working hard to make loans to local businesses. I don't believe any of the current loans are in Willets, but they're soliciting if any Willets businesses are looking for some startup funds or expansion funds, EDFC would love to hear from you. The other meeting is the following Thursday, October 21st in the morning, is the Mendocino Solid Waste Management Authority meeting. And we have located a new interim general manager who's only going to be part-time. And I'm not sure how many months he will be working for us, but it will definitely help to have a fill-in general manager because we have very, you know, the other staff really need that direction. We will be talking about that on our meeting on the 21st. And his name is Tom Varga. He was formerly, I think, Public Works Director for Fort Bragg, has a lot of relevant experience, most managerial and in solid waste management-related things. So looking forward to that. Okay. The last item we do not have, oh, no, we do have a closed session, sorry. So the last open session item is any good and welfare that anyone, council members would like to announce any good and welfare?
Greta, do you have the dates for the Hometown Festival maybe you want to announce?
I have that. It's October 22nd. Yeah, go ahead, Greta.
Go for it, Madge.
Okay, I jotted it down so I wouldn't forget. October 22nd from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. And the downtown will be hopping as usual. It'll be exciting. The other thing I wanted to make sure people knew about is that there's quite a few opportunities for COVID testing and vaccinations. Last week's Willets Weekly had a little chart of all of the different times, dates of the week and times and locations for both testing and vaccinations. So if people haven't been vaccinated, it's not too late. If they want to get tested, if they think they might have been exposed, it's all free, and there are available locations in Willets that are noticed in that last week's Willets Weekly. Okay. We now have a closed session, which is Conference with Labor Negotiator.
Greta had a point before.
Okay. Oh, she's picking her head now. I think she was going to talk about the Hometown Celebration, but I had that date handy. Okay. And by the way, you know, if you haven't yet ever gone to a Hometown Celebration, they're really fun. There's, you know, there's music, there's all sorts of public information booths, there's food, stores are open late. It's, you know, a lot of fun. So closed session. It is a conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Our negotiators, Brian Bender and Joel Bryden, Bob Murray and Associates, Patrick Clark, and the Employee Organization's Management Team. I'm not sure I understand all that. Is that who we're going to be meeting with there, Brian? All of those people?
So we have a closed session. This is to continue the discussion we had at, I think, two previous executive sessions regarding the management for our proposal. And then Joel Bryden wanted to kind of comment, and then Patrick Clark and I will go over where we are with the latest proposal.
Okay, good. All right, I was just reading it and kind of getting lost in the series of names. Okay, so we will adjourn, at least temporarily adjourn this open session. We'll go into closed session. And if there is anything to report out, we will go back to Kathy and Marsha know if there's a report out from closed session.
So is there going to be several-minute delay here? Does I need to pull off the other two?
Yeah, let's have about, what, five minutes, seven minutes? It's, let's do 20 after 7:00.
Okay.
Okay? So you're all there. All right.